Welcome to the March nineteenth workshop. Ms. Ballinger, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Sure. Please bow with me. Dear Lord, please give us the gifts of the Holy Spirit. Wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, piety, and fear of the Lord. And help us to use these gifts in this meeting. Please bless our city and all who live and work here. And please bless the United States and Texas. We ask all of these things in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. You'll stand for the pledge, please.
Pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, thank you very much for coming today. Next item is open forum. Do we have any, uh, Ms. Secretary? No open forum, okay. Next item. Reason we're here is a work session. Items included under this work session are intended to provide opportunities for city council to study and discuss various issues and gather and analyze information. Council will not take formal action on matters presented at a work station but work session but may direct staff to place items relating to the matter on future agendas for formal consideration. Nakadocha City Council has invited Norton Rose Fulbright, Bond Counsel, and Hilltop Securities Financial Advisors to discuss legal and procedural requirements necessary for the selling of bonds subsequent to a bond election on November seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And I will turn it over to Rick. Help me out here.
Okay. So, we've invited, um, Bond Counsel to be available for questions. Todd has also just put together just some general information. I think it's really like one slide at this point. Todd, did you want to just kind of talk us through the overall, really what's on the table? Kind of the discussion in terms of you wouldn't necessarily have to move forward on all of the bond items at one time. There's issues in terms of, you know, timing, in terms of tax implications, in terms of phasing. So, Todd, did you want to step up there and we can kind of talk through this more in a kind of a workshop session and answer any questions?
Y'all had a PowerPoint also too, though, right? No? Okay, sorry, I thought we had a different one also. But, um, okay, yeah, so we're here today. First of all, Todd Semino, Interim Finance Director. And I'm here to talk about, you know, issuing the bonds that was, um, you know, approved by the voters. And so, just wanted to start out by giving you two different scenarios to think about as far as bond issues. So, the first issue is if we issue the full forty-four thousand or forty-four million nine hundred ninety-nine, nine hundred ninety thousand dollars for the projects. And just to give you, you know, some financial information on that issue, the issuance cost would be about two hundred thousand dollars. And it would have an impact on your, on your current property tax rate of just over fifteen cents. So, you can see your current rate right now is a little over forty-seven cents. If, you know, we add the fifteen cents to it, that would bring your tax rate up to sixty-two point nine cents. And just to give you an app, you know, um, you know, the effect on an average taxpayer. So, if you have a, if you have a house that's worth a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, that would increase the property taxes by about a hundred and fifty-five dollars a year. So, um, we wanted to give you a different scenario to look at. Scenario two would be if you issue the bonds in three equal phases. So, right under fifteen million dollars each phase. So, to do that, the cost of the issuance of those bonds for all three phases would be right at four hundred thousand dollars. And we could call phase one, and we'll workshop this out and bring some more details to you, you know, if you wanted to go this route. But phase one would basically cover some engineering design, acquisition costs of right of ways, and construction. And for an equal, you know, for an equal allotment of the little over forty-four million dollars, that would increase your tax rate by a little over five cents a year. Phase two would be construction, and phase three would be construction. And the, and the timing of those phases would depend on the burn rate, how fast we're spending that money. Bond Counsel would tell you that, you know, you need to spend about eighty-five percent of what you issue within the first three years. So, to avoid arbitrage and other issues. So, we're not really sure on the timing of these phases. You know, at least the second and the third phase, it depends on how fast we can spend the money. But, um, again, just to give you, you know, a little more information. So, the impact it would have on a taxpayer with a hundred thousand dollar house, each phase would increase their property taxes by almost fifty-two dollars a year. And again, you know, the property tax rate is a function of assessed values, or the property taxes that you pay is a function of the assessed values and your tax rate. So, these numbers are estimated because assessed values are changing all the time. But this is just, you know, an illustration to give you, you know, what kind of impact it might have on the taxpayers.
Okay, I have a question. Okay, you mentioned arbitrage. Okay, would you explain that? Because that, that is, I think it really comes into play more on the airport than it would anything else, right?
Do one of you guys want to get technical on the arbitrage?
I'll jump in on this. I'm John Martin with Hilltop Securities, Mayor. So, there's arbitrage that, and that simply the, the term for that is you are earning more money than what you're paying. So, if you're borrowing at four percent and you can earn five percent on those proceeds, then you have a one percent arbitrage issue. So, it's not necessarily a bad thing. So, I think everybody hears that, and it's like a dirty word. It's really not. So, what that means is, is that because you're a tax exempt issuer and you have the ability to issue tax exempt bonds, then the IRS wants you to have a revenue neutral position there. So, it's just fine. You can earn up to your bond yield. And if you earn more than your bond yield, then you've earned everything you possibly can. You just have to periodically rebate. There's a calculation that has to be done, and there are professionals that will do this for you for a fifteen hundred dollar engagement fee. It's, it's relatively inexpensive, but it's something you have to do. And they will determine how much that amount is, that one percent amount, that has to go back to Uncle Sam every
Five years?
Five years. So, it's, it's not, it's not, arbitrage is not a bad thing. If you earn arbitrage, if you have positive arbitrage, that means you've earned every possible penny you could. It's, it's a great thing these days because just a few years ago, you were borrowing at three percent and able to only earn a quarter of a percent, nothing. So, you had really negative arbitrage. Today, you now have positive arbitrage in almost all circumstances. Because the government investment pools and that sort of thing that where you all have your liquid cash and so forth, where usually most bond proceeds go while they're waiting to be spent for projects, those are earning well over five percent these days. So, that's a great thing. We, we estimate, um, that today, your interest rate on these bonds would be, and I know that's probably a question that you all have for us later on, around three and a half, between three and a half to four percent. And keep in mind when we, when we did these, these tax impact, I didn't want to steal Todd's thunder, but these are the exact same, these, these tax rates and impacts are exactly what was shown to the voters. So, and we were basing that on four and four and a half percent rates, so higher rates. And I think just in the increase in your tax base, remember, as, as Todd said here, it's based on assessed values that the CAD provides for us. And we were assuming a two percent increase in that. So, I just kind of wanted to go, I know you didn't, you asked me about arbitrage. But I did want to go on to that, too.
Okay, perfect. Good, thank you. Okay.
So, are there, are there actual penalties if we borrow more? That's not a penalty. That's just, we have to do some accounting maneuvers to return the excess dollars. Is that correct? Or is, are there penalties or are there problems? Help us out, please.
I'd be delighted to. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Bob Dransfield with Norton Rose Fulbright here as your Bond Counsel. And with me is Kristin Savant, one of my partners. And penalties is a little bit of an illusory word in that sense. As John indicated, if you make a positive arbitrage, and you look at this on a five-year cycle during that period of that time, if you still have a positive arbitrage, you have to rebate that to the federal government. So, if you want to view that as a penalty, you can view it as a penalty. It's not like no one's going to jail because of that, but you do have to rebate that. So, the, the federal government does want, as John says, a revenue neutral process. You know, and, and sometimes you'll say, look, we've made a positive arbitrage this year, but you look at this on a five-year cycle. So, next year may be lower. At the end of the day, you take that five-year average at the end of the day and see whether you know anything or not. You have to do that every five years while the debt is outstanding. And then kind of within sixty days after the debt is finally paid off, you have to take another look at that again and see what, if any, arbitrage is due in terms of a rebate to the federal government. Maybe zero, and that's great if it is. But the penalty, if you will, is just the need to repay that back to the federal government. Does that answer your question?
It, it does.
Okay.
I have more questions, but I know my colleagues have other questions, too.
So, I think one thing to think through, and I'm not sure if you, you might be the best one to answer the question.
I'll stand over here.
So, let's take a scenario where we sell the first tranche, get design done. We sell the second. We think we're going to go, you know, put out the bond package. Some bids come in high, or you have to go even halfway through construction. There's something unforeseen because it's such an old, you know, let's say, the right of way, don't know what's in there. And we can't spend a significant portion of the funds within, let's say, the second tranche. So, what would that, within that three years? So, I think those are the type of scenarios to probably talk through.
Okay.
That was my second question, by the way.
So, in addition to what have you earned, uh, the federal tax laws are set up to be, how are you spending the money? And they're going to tell you that you need to spend eighty-five percent of your spendable proceeds within a three-year period of time. When you issue the debt, you have to be reasonably certain that you can do that at that point in time. And that's to give you the ability to kind of invest in those things without really worrying about the investment, knowing this rebate we just talked about is in place. So, you may have to have a rebate, but you can still kind of invest as you're going through this process. If you find yourself saying, look, we're getting close to the end of that three-year period of time, we haven't spent the money, we still haven't done this, and we got to, you know, we've got to invest that. Well, one of the remedies that oftentimes takes place is you'll restrict the yield on those investments to a yield not greater than the yield on the bonds that you've got outstanding. And that kind of makes things neutral, if you will, in that sense. So, uh, you do need to take seriously when you, you know, and it's really the finance department for the most part. When you issue the debt, there's going to be a certification that says, we reasonably expect to spend eighty-five percent of these spendable proceeds within a three-year period of time. And that should be based on reality, right? But lots of times you're at that stage, especially in the early stages of projects, you know, you maybe have gotten some architectural drawings done, or maybe not. Maybe you've done some engineering and maybe not. So, you may not have a true good estimate idea as to what the cost is going to be until you're a little further into the process. The other thing that guides you in this case is you know from your seven propositions, you've got for each one of those propositions, a maximum principal amount that can be issued from that proposition. So, you can't exceed that to be consistent with what the voters have approved. So, those are the kind of dynamics you've got to look at as you're looking to spend those dollars down. And the other thing I had mentioned is when you look at this eighty-five percent of spendable proceeds, you think of that as an issue by issue basis. So, you've got seven propositions, but let's just take for an illustration, a fact pattern where you're going to put four of those propositions together in one issue. And let's just say that total issue with those four propositions is ten million dollars. That's going to be the number that you're going to use that eighty-five percent for. The authorized but unissued bonds are kind of non-event. It's not factored into that discussion whatsoever. So, you're going to think about that eighty-five percent on the amount of that particular bond issue. And let's just take for, again, my illustration. So, that's a two thousand and twenty-four issue of ten million dollars. That's going to be the pegging for, for this particular discussion we're having right now. That's not to say then in two thousand and twenty-five, you come back and say, now you need another two million dollars out of this. And, and you look between those seven propositions, how much of that you've spent or authorized, and how much remains to be spent unauthorized. And you kind of figure out what those projects are going to look like from your perspective as you go forward with spending the dollars that the voters have authorized.
Well, I know, um, just from our, our dollars that we have received and needed to spend within a certain timeframe, it's been a lot more difficult than I had, um, thought. I mean, we're doing it. We're spending all of our, our dollars, but particularly because in the design phase, there are problems you hadn't foreseen. And then, um, and then the bidding, sometimes we don't get the right bids and we have to rebid it. So, the timeframes really do concern me that we get eighty-five percent. We're a small city, and we want to do it right, and we want to do it, um, so, so that, you know, actually having eighty-five percent.
We, we want you to do it right, too.
Yeah, I know you do. So, that is one of my concerns, and I'd love to hear your thoughts on it.
Well, again, a lot of times you don't know all the factors before you start the project. And so, you just got to use your best estimates. So, again, they have to be reasonable estimates. So, if, if you say, look, we have, we authorized a billion dollars, and we're going to spend it in three years, that's just crazy. It's not, that's not reasonable. But if you say, you know, we're going to do this in some manner that's really reasonable, then you'll take that into account. And if the facts and circumstances change, I mean, if, if you just relate back to a couple of years, no one would have saw the impact that COVID had and the supply chain issues and things like that that got everybody kind of mixed up. So, as a result of that, you, you can't necessarily predict everything with accuracy. So, there's, it's a built-in process. And I said earlier, one of the things that your remedies would be if you have a problem is to restrict the yield. You'll make that certification. Now, there, there are some projects where the, you know, the IRS allows you to go ahead and say, instead of that three-year temporary period that I'm going to generally refer to, you know, with engineering backup and so on, that could be extended to a five-year period. That's not the norm for the products like you've outlined here. For the most part, those are the types of projects that normally people are expecting to spend that amount of dollars in a three-year period of time. Wouldn't it be realistic to say you could spend, you know, forty-four million dollars in three years? Probably not. So, you would say, well, we're not, we don't have to issue forty-four million dollars unless you elected to do that. But, but you would say, okay, I have that particular first issue. And again, in my example, if it's a ten million dollar issue for the different purposes that you're looking to. So, can you do that for streets? And can you do that for parks? And can you do that for the airport? Can you do that for any one of those seven? Are you realistically likely to be able to spend eighty-five percent of those spendable proceeds within that period of time? And that's really what the test is going to be, is based on what's a reasonable expectation. And if it's not reasonable, then, you know, people will know about that most likely. Uh, and, and then if you say, well, we thought that was a reasonable expectation and we just got it wrong, well, then you look to see kind of where you are. Because what's the penalty? The, the whole guideline for this is the IRS and the Treasury don't want to have any more tax exempt bonds outstanding than they need to have. So, as a result of that, you may can come back to that process where you're going to restrict the yield artificially. So, you might invest those things instead of something that's got a five percent interest rate, find an instrument that's an investment that's going to have one that's equal to or less than the yield on the debt that you've issued. So, you're going to have to play that type of a tax game, if you will, a little shuffling of the cards from time to time. But, you know, again, it's predicated upon what your reasonable expectation is at the time you issue the debt.
So, scenario number one would not be for us, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Only eighty-five percent within the three years. Scenario number one, we would not, that's beneficial to us.
You know, that, that's a facts and circumstances discussion. But it sounds to me like that may be challenging for you to spend eighty-five percent of forty-four million dollars in three years on those projects. Because that's, that forty-four million dollars accounts for all seven projects. So, you're going to look at that as one big issue, one forty-four million dollar issue. And if you said, okay, we're going to spend eighty-five percent in X, Y, and Z and get the bulk of that done, then you're going to kind of say, well, does that get us close enough? Does that bulk get us close enough to that eighty-five percent? And it may not.
That's the engineering and construction. Do we start? Is that, how does that figure in with eighty-five percent?
Well, you, you know, it's, again, you're spending those proceeds. One of the project component costs typically are engineering and architect fees that gets paid. So, you can kind of say, okay, we spent that, we're checking that off the list. It's not just bricks and mortar that's kind of comes in that discussion. So, you're looking at the whole issue. Again, in my ten million dollar example, if, let's just hypothetically say a million dollars of that, it's architects and soft costs, if you will. And, and so you say it's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars to do cost of issuance, or whatever the number is. So, you, you take that off the top for that eighty-five percent. So, that's not included in that number. It's eighty-five percent of the spendable proceeds. And you have to have those dollars then spent. And, and, you know, again, if it's paying architects and engineers, if you're ready to get to the point of starting to say, we're going to, you know, employ contractors and get materials paid for and work underway and all those types of things, that's just kind of how your timeline for projects is going to evolve. And that's pretty typical.
Yeah, I've been just trying to set my mindset as to where, which I thought scenario one or two is. So, that explains it to me.
Okay.
And the only thing I might add is when we would bring back more detail, depending on, first, why don't you get the feel that if we issued everything, we'd probably have the eighty-five percent issue, most likely. If we went with a phased approach where we do the soft costs and the right-of-way acquisition first, anything we would want to even consider putting in that pot. And we might not come with the full, let's even say, the fifteen million. We might come with a, a number that's a little lower. What we would want to do is make sure anything that would be in that first phase of construction pot, along with the design and construct, a design and acquisition cost, would be something that's almost a no-brainer. Something that either case already has designed or is an off-the-shelf design, or we already have the right-of-way. That would be my recommendation, that anything that would go in that first tranche, construction-wise, that there'd be fewer unknowns. So, that's just my, having seen this other places and even adjacent cities and other places, because you want to make sure your design is as good as it can be on your big stuff that you have unknowns. And even then, if it's reconstruction, especially in older city, there's often something in there that you did not, that you couldn't x-ray or had no idea was there. You certainly wouldn't want that wrapped up in your phase one.
Brad, you got any questions?
Yeah, is this our only choice, one or two? Door number one, door number two?
No, sir.
What are the choices?
Three, four, five, and however you want. So, the voters have authorized the issuance of bonds for seven propositions. Each proposition has its maximum amount that you can dip into. How you spend those dollars is up to you all to exercise your discretion as a council. And so, if you say, look, we can afford to do X number, you don't necessarily have to have three equal propositions, for example, for the next issue. You could say, okay, we're going to put it however you think makes sense, taking into account what the manager's suggesting in terms of when are you going to spend these dollars? How are you going to do the planning of them? But you have absolute discretion in trying to figure out how you're going to spend and this authorized amount of debt that you've got. And so, you could say, okay, we're going to do three of the propositions right now. We're going to put something later on, or we're going to do a little bit of each one of these seven. And so, you're going to have the ability to kind of figure out what makes the most sense for you all as you want to do it. And then you'll figure out as well, you know, you'll get numbers from Hilltop and others in the city staff to say, you know, what makes the most sense for us to go forward from a numbers perspective in terms of the debt impact? And all those things kind of get factored into your discussion and ultimately your decision. That decision needs to ultimately come together so that bonds can be sold into the marketplace. So, you will have to make some decisions that say, we're going to go with this. And at some point in time, then that'll be what you'll take to the marketplace. And they'll say, okay, we're going to issue, again, in my example, ten million dollars. But that could be five million dollars, it could be two million dollars, it could be a million dollars. It could be any of these things that you want to mix and match, if you will.
I think a common fallacy that's run through several people's minds, mine at least, was, oh, well, if we get all that money now and we get a higher interest rate, it's a profit-making venture, but it's not.
Well, it is, but you don't get to keep the profit.
You don't get to keep it. So, we're, we're not going to come out of this with extra money in our pocket, correct?
Right, before the eighty-six Tax Act, you could do that. And you could, you could borrow at five and invest at eight and keep that three percent differential as your money. The federal government said, we don't think that's such a keen idea. So, the eighty-six Tax Act said, you're going to do that. You can borrow at five and invest at eight, and we thank you very much because you're going to give us the three back. So, you know, you, you, the goal is to try to get as close to that arbitrage level as you can. And if you go over it, that's not so bad, as John indicates. But it's just not money you get to keep and factor into your process.
And one other troubleshooting scenario is, let's say we get into a, uh, a scenario where project phase has higher costs than the bond approval. So, talk through that and what that delta. And again, you're in the phase, you're in construction, you have a road that is torn up, and then there's unforeseen, and you hit that scenario. How that would
Park Street again? Sorry.
I'm just, this is a theoretical, theoretical only.
You know, some of that be related to where you are with your voted authorization. So, let's just say that you're taking a proposition that says X. And let's just take the first one here as, you know, seven point three million dollars for the airport. And, and let's just say that you're now, you've issued two million dollars out of that seven point three million. And you find out that you need more money than the two million because you just need to have it. And so, you look to say, okay, you've, you've got still remaining about five million dollars plus from that airport. So, you'll end up, you know, having another issue of debt, most likely to cover those costs if you need them, unless you pay for those costs from some other source. And, and, you know, again, this is just authorization to you all to exercise your discretion that the voters have given you to spend up to these amounts for each one of these propositions. So, if you find yourself in that spot where the costs have increased, and you need to make sure that you don't have just a half a bridge, you want to make sure you finish the bridge, something's got to happen, right? So, you either have to issue more debt to cover that other half of the bridge, in my example, or you've got to figure out some other way to fund that, whether it be from general revenues or some grants or those types of things. So, people always in your spot and cities typically around the state are always looking for different sources of revenue to help offset their costs. And that's, I'm sure, what you'd have to do if you had that kind of a fact pattern.
I have another
Okay.
question that pertains to that. So, say, for example, we find, uh, something within one of these propositions costs a whole lot more. Can we do two of the things and not do the third thing? Or, and still, you know, we are keeping it within the bond, or?
Well, effectively, I would say yes. I mean, remember, you have, you have authorized these things for these specific purposes. So, your contract with the voters is X. And let's just say that you're going to take the parks proposition. And it says you're going to do this for park and recreation facilities. So, you decide what are park and recreation facilities. And then you see in, in your proposition, there's including. So, read including but not limited to, because that is including those types of things. So, you can, within those general propositions, let's just say streets is another good example. You might, from a working capital perspective internally, say, we think we're going to prioritize these ten streets first. And then you find out that Tech Dot or something else has come in, and you don't need to do but eight of those. Then you have the ability to take those, those monies and redirect them to two other streets. It's still have to be for street purposes. You can't just mix and match between propositions. You can't say, we've, we've, we've come under budget on proposition one, but we're over budget on proposition two, so we're going to take some of proposition two and move it around to proposition one and move it around. You can't do that. They've got to keep those separate distinct. So, even though you've got one issue of bonds in my ten million dollar example, you have to stay within the authority that's given you for each one of those propositions. So, that's kind of the outside limit on those things. But, but if you need to spend more money because you've got the product costs have been higher than anticipated, then you, you've got to fund it or make the decision as to what you're going to do. In your question, then you can say, okay, within these propositions, because they're all pretty generally worded, and I'm, I'm always going to be an advocate for you to have flexibility. So, you all can decide how you want to exercise your discretion when you're looking at these types of things. And so, yeah, you, you specifically said, okay, we're doing things for fire station one and fire station. Those are relatively specific purposes. But remember, it's also for firefighting facilities to replace these. And so, that's, that's the contract with the voters is that specific. If you look at some of these other ones, you know, again, like, uh, storm drainage facilities and improvements. Well, there's no direction as to where that is in town, or what comes first, or what comes second. Those are the kind of things that you all will prioritize and figure out how you're going to spend those storm drainage proposition purposes. So, you got, again, you've got flexibility, and you're just going to deal with the facts that make sense to you all, given what's going on in your community.
I think my next question's probably for Mr. Martin.
Good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thinking along the lines of, of our proposed scenarios here, and, uh, Councilmember Mall brings up a good point of what other options, uh, exist. We have some of the variables here that we need to consider, like the issuance cost and how things are subject to change. How can we find the most cost-effective way to do this and make sure that we, we are meeting the, the federal guidelines and spending it? we are meeting the, the federal guidelines and spending it? How can we find a scenario that fits us best and, and what's that process?
And I think you all are, are doing a great job at, by having this meeting tonight, and then coming back to the, the next step would be for the staff to come back to you all with some recommendations of sizing and timing for that first tranche, if you will. They're gonna have a better idea of what their capacity is for that, and then you all will have a better idea of what your capacity is for what you wanna sell for the first round of this authorization. In terms of, um, you know, the cost of issuing, showing that each time, there's certain, there's certain, uh, costs associated with bond sales that are, that you, you, uh, that each sale has a fixed price. Some of the stuff, like the way that, that Mr. Anfield's firm and, and our firm are paid are as a percentage of the issue, so there's not a whole lot of difference, you know, in percentage-wise, uh, but some of these like, uh, rating fees and things like that, and some of the fixed, there's fixed fees. So it's kind of hard where you look at it, and Todd's example here, where we did equal amount, say you did fifteen million dollars, well, uh, each issue, well, that would total up to almost four hundred thousand dollars. So that's about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars per sale, right, versus two hundred thousand if you did it all at once. There's just, you know, sometime, you just have to pay a little bit more in cost, because in the end, you're gonna benefit, um, because you, you didn't do it all at once. It might cost you more to do more sales. So, but at the end of the day, you can't hit that eighty-five percent in three years, so, you know, you're just gonna, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to, we'll have to come to terms with the fact that this is gonna be more than one sale. Then after, as Rick said, you know, as you get into this and, and determine, you know, how this, how this, these projects are going, there's not a limitation to, and to, what we, what you all will be watching for is how quickly are you spending that money, and when are you ready to sell the next series of bonds? That might be two thousand twenty-six, it might be two thousand twenty-seven. It might be twenty-five. You might be, this thing might rock along, and you might be ready to come back a year from now and say, well, we're ready for part two. But we're not gonna know that, really. The first one is key. The first one is key, because that's where all your engineering, design, acquisition, that's where you're gonna really get an idea of what exactly this is gonna cost, and then you can figure out the logistics of these projects of how long it's actually gonna take to put them all on the ground. Does that make sense?
Let me say one thing, just to warn the council, we have a hard stop at five fifteen because we have a five-thirty meeting, so. Anybody got any more questions?
My only question is, uh, how much can the, the people of this town, even though they voted for it, how much can they take? Like, I know if I get a tax bill that, that rises, you know, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, a hundred and fifty-five dollars per hundred thousand, that's gonna be a big hit for the taxpayer next year as opposed to splitting it up into a smaller increment. You know, just human nature, you're gonna be a little better with the pieces of taxes going up.
Right. It won't be one big hit, it'll be, you know, it'll phase in over a period of time, and hopefully your property values will go up. Um, y- your overall tax base will go up, so that tax rate will go down, and it won't be, it won't be a nickel, it might be four cents instead, so who knows? You know, it's, it's dependent. There's a lot of crystal ball here. The other thing, too, that, that I don't know that, you know, that we haven't talked about tonight is, you know, that, that is another crystal ball consideration here is inflation. You know, the cost of these projects, the longer, the longer you wait to put them on the ground, you know, you, we gotta be careful because we don't wanna find ourselves short because we waited too long to do the projects. So, you know, it's, it's, um, that's, there's a lot of, it's, there's a lot of whack-a-mole, you know?
Let me, let me say one thing that, that I've heard the last couple of days in the community, that, that the council is slowballing the bonds. That's not true. I think your first proposal was to come to us when, in, end of February, or, okay. All right, this is not even the end of March. We've had Todd in Finance just had his head covered up with numbers trying to get ready for our audit. So we weren't prepared, uh, to talk to you when, and I think we missed the schedule maybe a couple of weeks. So here we are now. We are ready to move. We are ready to proceed with what the electorate said to do. Now, uh, I know we can't make a decision, but, but I'll make a suggestion, and then we can argue about it, but I, I would recommend that, that we, uh, give this back to management. He works with engineering every day, he works with finance every day, he works with all the departments every single day. And then when you think it's time, Rick, I mean, it, it could be the next council meeting, or if you need more time to where we have them back and we can make, get ready to make a definitive sale of these bonds, so.
Can we talk about this real quick?
Yes, we can.
So I think this-
We've got, uh-
Mayor, I think this will hit to your point. So this gives us, and I realize we have a hard stop, real quick, what we were looking at for, to your point, moving forward, and let's get the ball rolling here. So this, uh, indicates a start where we start gathering information to start the process here next week, week of March twenty-sixth. So, um, the request for information for the offering documents and so on. We'll be prepared to send this information, and you had, you hadn't had, because your finance situation, your financial ma- uh, your, that department-
Department, yes.
And Todd being covered up, we, we know, know we have a better idea of when we might have an audit and that sort of thing. Well, it's kind of hard to go for a credit rating without an audit, right? So, um, so we need to have that in place, so that, that's why, I think another reason that we had to have a little time here, and we're moving as fast as we can. I totally agree with you. Um, as we come down, we'll, we'll get these projects while all this is going, staff is gonna be getting their project and their first sale recommendation back to you all to pick and choose what you wanna do. While, while they're doing that, we're gonna be working, Bob's gonna be working to get legal documents together, we'll be working to get the offering documents, we'll be working our preliminary stuff to get to the rating agency. All this says that we come down here to, uh, a pricing and sale to your May seventh council meeting. And that's when we would ultimately price, sell the bonds, that's, that's sale number one. And it's locked in that night. So we're gonna need to have everything by around April twenty-fourth, when we start talking to, see the underwriters con- the conference calls with underwriters counsel and S and P. We need to have everything locked down by then. So, and, and I think that we could, I think that's doable.
Okay. Is that doable?
It is, and we've, we've talked about it, and you gotta remember, some of these projects were more developed than others.
Yes.
So what we recommend, you know, on one project's gonna be a little bit different than another. One may be right-of-way, one may be a whole lot of design, and then some things, case is already in process designing in-house. So we'll bring that detail. It's not just gonna be necessarily just a flat fifteen percent engineering fee, uh, on design across the board. They're all a little bit different. And then some have right-of-way, and then, of course, fire stations, you've got, you've got property acquisitions, so they've, they've all got a little bit different answer out of the gate, which will get us by the time we would get to the second tranche close to the, fi- what we hope the final answer is when we're getting, uh, you know, bids in and, and really where it's gonna fall in terms of construction with things we know. And the one thing I would go ahead and caution on the front end, a lot of how this will go, and you've seen it everywhere. I know you have, John, it, you may hit no, no snags whatsoever in the process. You may get a very good, uh, list of competitive bidders with all pricing close, and they're able to bid it to the T. Or you may only get on some projects, one or two bidders, and it looks like they're, they're swapping on prices on this project versus another one, and then you have a whole different set of contingencies that might lead to having to rebid or de-scope or something to get it done. So I would just caution some patients, especially since this hasn't been done in a while, and even in perfect circumstances, again, you mentioned COVID, can't even talk about some projects I've seen where bonds were approved pre-COVID and how they ended up post-COVID. And they weren't even in the same order of magnitude or the same number of bidders that anyone ever anticipated.
I have one more really quick question.
Okay.
Okay, this is about the tax rate, and I know, um, I'm wondering how this tax increase fits into our limit for property tax increases. Are we gonna be bumping up against that? I know we'll have less of a possibility if we do this in tranches.
So this is in part of the, the INS portion that is not subject to the tax cap. So your maintenance, your maintenance tax is subject to tax cap. The entry, these are, these are voter-approved bonds, so they are not subject to the tax cap.
But we want, we wanted to not, we wanna be cognizant to the real-world impact that this is gonna have, too.
Right.
Because nothing would be worse than, like you mentioned, hitting everybody up on the front end and then finding out that we've got penalties and other issues down the line, and we're not hitting that eighty-five percent.
Okay. Is everybody good with that recommendation?
Yes, let's move forward.
City manager, you, you got direction?
Okay, all right. Okay, we've got, uh, five minutes. Anybody from the audience? We can do that, can't we?
No, you can't.
There being none, then.
Okay. All right, Mayor, I do have one question. Can we get this timeline posted? Because we were just handed copies. Can we get that posted?
I apologize, that's my fault. I have a misjudgment with Todd, what, I shouldn't have sent that to Rhonda, and I didn't, I blew it.
Perfectly fine. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody got any more questions? Okay, all right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
State of, or city of Nacogdoche, state.